And concurrent regular meeting of Sonoma City Council as the successor agency to the dissolved Sonoma Community Development Agency. Tonight is Monday, November 7, and at this point, we would do the call to order and the pledge of allegiance. So I will, George McHale, give you some questions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're back with the U.S. Customs.
And roll call.
Councilmember Cook.
Here.
Vice Mayor Aggermonte.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Henley.
Here.
Mayor Gallion.
Present.
Thank you.
There is no closed session, so we will move on to comments from the public. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. It is recommended that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the city council at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for council consideration. Upon being acknowledged by the mayor, please step to the podium and speak into the microphone. Begin by stating and spelling your name and address. Step up to the podium. Public comment is open.
Kate Schertz, 662 Oregon Street, Sonoma. Madam Mayor and members of council, my name is Kate Schertz, and I am the current Chair of your Commission on Cultural and Fine Arts. I approach you tonight to share with you a few thoughts about our recent selection of Dick Cole as the 2016 treasure artist. The plaque naming him was presented by the mayor and me to his daughter at a small ceremony last Friday night at the memorial altar at the community center. Dick, who left this earth September 26th, was a nationally known watercolorist and the past president of the National Watercolor Society. His realist watercolors are the epitome of this most difficult and unforgiving medium as a watercolorist, I can say that. There's no painting over a watercolor. Once the pigment hits the water and the paper, it's there forever. And Dick Cole's watercolors were wonderful examples of pigment flowing through water onto paper. During the 25 years that Dick lived in Sonoma, he was fundamental in creating the Sonoma Plan Air Foundation, a nationally recognized invitation-only week that brings artists from all over the country and even overseas to paint outside all over our county. The culminating show and sale in the plaza requires that 40 percent of the sales go to supporting art programs here in the valley. This has resulted in more than $1 million in the past 14 years to support art in our schools, museums, and community organizations. Dick was also a member of the board of our wonderful local Sonoma Valley Museum of Art and regularly donated watercolors to its major fundraiser, the Wet Paint Gala. In addition, he shared his gifts and knowledge by regularly teaching at the Sonoma Community Center. In the many nominations we received for Dick, and there were many, we also read words testifying to his character: a super-nice guy, a real sweetheart of a man, a gentle soul who was always supportive and kind. Dick was once quoted as saying the following: "I love to paint the ordinary and try to make it anything but ordinary." Well, Dick Cole, you were anything but ordinary, so we salute you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Anyone else wishing to speak on public comment, please step forward.
Hi, Amy Harrington, 235 East Napa Street. I just wanted to say, on the eve of the city council election, thank you so much to the city council candidates for their service and for their campaign based on ideas and nothing personal or anything like that, and so, thank you very much. It's been a privilege debating with you and talking over ideas and being part of the community with you. Thanks, goodnight.
Thank you, Amy.
Jack Wagner, 270 West Napa Street. I want to repeat a lot of what Amy said. This was fun, it was intense. I think it got Sonoma talking about a lot of stuff, and I think we're better off having this campaign. I think it's sharp contrast from our national political scene. And one of the benefits was I kind of got to ignore the national political scene this whole time. People ask me, I'm like, "No, I don't, I'm not even really paying attention. I've got too much stuff here in Sonoma to focus on." And I look forward to serving with any of you guys, and best of luck tomorrow, and we'll see what it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Anyone else wishing to speak on public comment? Please step forward.
So I'd like to dedicate the meeting tonight to a couple of folks, and I think Mayor Gallion will speak about Dr. Ross Olness, who passed away, and then Mike Bracco, who we lost over the weekend, longtime Sonoma family and agricultural supporters and just fantastic folks. And so my thoughts go out to them, and the community's thoughts go out to the Bracco family and the Olness family.
David, I think you had some comments also.
Yeah, I just want to say, and thank you, Councilmember Edwards, I've known Doc Olness for years, and to see him pass was sad, and then to hear about Mike Bracco over the weekend was almost devastating. So I just wanted to reach out to both of those families and let them know that, sorry for the news, and they were great people and great for Sonoma.
I will also additionally dedicate this meeting to Dick Cole, in honor of him being a treasure artist who passed away in September, the end of September, who was not able to receive his actual award. So the granddaughter was quite moved by the activities here in Sonoma, and it was a wonderful celebration of about 30 to 40 people at the community center at the altar, and just a real showing of people who had been touched by the life of Dick Cole. I'd like to read a little bit about Ross Olness, and just that he was my physician for 30-some years. Unfortunately, I was not part of his concierge medicine group. I had to elect a different path, but it didn't mean that we didn't see each other often, and he probably knows more about me than anyone else in Sonoma, including my husband. So for me, it came as quite a shock when David called me and told me that, you know, he had passed away. I just want to say that he was recognized as Physician of the Year in 2011 for outstanding compassion, quality, delivery of medical care to the Sonoma Valley Hospital patients and families. And a quote in the paper from Kelly Mather, where she stated, "He was an iconic figure in Sonoma and beloved by several generations of Sonoma families." Everyone in our community loved him, and he had respect of the entire physician community. And nothing was more apparent than that in my years when I was working as a business manager at Titus and Peterson Radiology, and his office was across the way. And I would often say to the doctors, "How come he has more clients than we do?" And we had quite a profession over there for the radiology. And the doctor said, "Well, he has more personality than we do." So I believe the memorial service will be on Saturday at 1:30 at Hannah Boy Center, for those who wish to attend. And with that, we will move on to presentations. I do not believe there are any presentations this evening, so we'll go straight through to the consent calendar. And all items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. At this time, council may decide to change the order of the agenda. So council members, any questions, comments, items that is pulled? All right, seeing none, I will open it up for public comment, and we have Mr. Demler walking to the podium.
Good evening, council and mayor. Robert Demler, First Street West, Sonoma. I first came to Sonoma about 45 years ago and decided, the first visit, that I wanted to live here, and it took me a number of years to get here, because I've been here, and I can say in Sonoma, this is a useful term, only for 19 years, and I'm very happy to be here. I am also ecstatic about my being appointed, though I'm reminded by a certain council person that I'm not yet confirmed, so I should watch what I say tonight. So I will say, when I interviewed with the mayor and the mayor pro tem, I did commit to them that I knew the difference between, I'm not sure what at this point, but I said I could be charming when I needed to be, I could be diplomatic when I needed to be, circumspect when I needed to be, but otherwise, I was just Robert. So I think most of you know me, but I think you know how much I love Sonoma, and how much I love history and preservation, and I am ecstatic to have, use that word a second time, to have a chance to deal with it on a broader scale and to work with all of you and with all of the city to make us more and more aware of the treasure we have in Sonoma. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert. Anyone else wishing to speak on these items?
George McHale, 717 Los One Street. Very quickly, I have known Robert for many years now. In fact, I think it seems a little bit like a lifetime. And when I first became city historian, very shortly thereafter, he and I started talking history, and we haven't stopped. So I think Robert will be an excellent city historian and serve our community well. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, and city manager, Carol?
Yes, I just would like to make one correction to item 4B. It is on page five of your agenda packet. There was an exhibit A that was erroneously included in the agenda packet, and that shouldn't be there, so I don't want anyone to mistake that there was an attachment to the resolution. I think that was just an error, that it was included in the agenda packet, so would like that that be noted, that that be removed. That is not part of the resolution or the staff report.
So the page that we are removing is page?
Page five.
Page five.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. It's just procedural, but I just wanted to make note of that.
And it is the front of page five only?
That is correct.
Right, six and seven go as standard.
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we'll bring it back to council at this point for motion or action or further discussion. Councilmember Henley.
I would like to make a motion to approve all items in the consent calendar minus page five.
Second. So we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, let's call for the vote.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Aggermonte.
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Henley.
Aye.
Mayor Gallion.
Aye. So with that, we have five in favor, and we will move on to our next item, which is the Consent Calendar Agenda Order for City Council as Successor Agency. And there are no items listed under this item, so we will move forward to our public hearing. Just take a moment here while we clear the chambers. So our first item is item 6A, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action to Conduct Second Reading and Adoption of an Ordinance Amending Chapter 14.24, Review, Rehabilitation, and Abatement of Existing Seismically Unsafe Buildings of the Sonoma Municipal Code. Development Services Director and Building Official, Mr. Wayne Wierke.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. The purpose of the revisions to Chapter 14.24 of the Sonoma Municipal Code is to coordinate and update the provisions that are contained in our existing ordinance and to mesh it with the new codes, building standard codes that are coming into effect on January 1st of 2017. And that's the main purpose of this ordinance. It's just cleanup language, doesn't change any of the requirements that are in the existing ordinance, and so it's just meshing the ordinance with the codes that are in place now. That concludes my staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so the actions that we're taking here tonight are to have the first reading of this, is that correct? No, second.
No, this is the second reading and the adoption of the ordinance.
And the adoption, okay. All right, so any questions from council? All right, then let's move it to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Please step forward. Seeing no one, let's bring it back to council for motion, further discussion, actions.
I'd like to move to, yeah, to, let's see, I have to read the resolution. Is that right?
Yes, it's a docti ordinance, and by title.
Here we are. Okay, I'd like to adopt the, an ordinance of the city of Sonoma amending Chapter 14.24, review rehabilitation and abatement of existing seismically unsafe buildings of the Sonoma Municipal Code. Thank you.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Edwards. Do we need any further discussion? Seeing none, let's call for the vote.
Councilmember Cook.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Aggermonte.
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Henley.
Aye.
Mayor Gallion.
Aye. So with that, we have gone ahead and adopted the second reading, consideration of the ordinance amending Chapter 14.24 of the municipal code, Sonoma Municipal Code. All right, moving on to item 6B, which is the Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action to Conduct a Second Reading, Public Hearing, and Adopt an Ordinance Repealing Chapter 14.10 of the Sonoma Municipal Code, Reenacting a New Chapter 14.10, Adopting and Amending New Construction Codes, and Adoption of Findings Determining the Ordinance to be Exempt Under California Environmental Quality Act. Again, Wayne, it's up to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council introduced and proposed the ordinance to adopt and amend the 2016 California Building Standards Code at its meeting of October 17. And for the benefit of those here tonight, I'll provide a very brief overview of the code adoption process and highlights, and then certainly be available for any questions. The new model codes are published approximately every three years, and the state adopts and amends those codes and reprints them as the state building standards code. Local enforcement of the state amended codes is required effective January 1st of 2017. By way of example, the state has adopted significantly more stringent energy requirements for new residential buildings that will essentially require new buildings to be 28 percent more efficient than the ones that we're constructing today. So as time goes on, the codes are updated, and the state increases the requirements to, in terms of building construction regulations. Local amendments to the codes are typically needed by cities and counties to provide regional consistency and enhance code requirements to address local issues, dealing with items such as hazards, building abatement, signs, fire sprinkler systems, firefighter safety, administrative requirements, and green building standards. The local amendments being proposed by this ordinance are generally consistent with the existing policies and construction requirements that were previously adopted by the city council and are outlined further in the supplemental staff report. Examples of local amendments include clarifying administrative provisions, providing a higher level of green building standards to help the city meet, or the city council, climate protection initiatives, and providing a higher level of fire protection measures and operating permits to help the city maintain its Class I ISO fire protection rating. In terms of financial impact, each time new codes are updated, construction costs increase as a result of addition of the addition of more restrictive and complicated requirements. The changes in code results in an increase in the cost of providing code-compliant services by increasing the need for additional training and public education, as well as increasing the cost for plan review, inspection, and other related code enforcement services. Staff is recommending that the council hold a public hearing on the proposed ordinance, publicly read the title and adopt the ordinance, and direct the city clerk to prepare a summary and carry out the special publication procedures as required by the government code. That concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember questions? I think the only thing that I wanted to state is that, being that this goes into effect in January, it has to mesh into a lot of different departments. So for me, I know that currently we're challenged with some of our goals in climate change, so is this going to be something that we'll be able to peel apart and make sure that we can put in our current measures that we're proposing to adopt and enact and implement?
Yes, certainly between now and January, we will be updating many of our forms, particularly green building forms, so that designers and contractors can use those forms ahead of times while they're in the design phase, and so that they'll be ready to go when they submit their permits after January 1st. So we have a lot of work to do to, just to provide public information. We have hundreds of handouts and forms that need to be updated as a result of these code changes, and we'll be working hard to get that done.
Thank you. And Carol, did you want to say something in that respect?
Yes, and we are working currently on the climate action measures in the background, and we will be using this as resource material, you know, looking prospectively, working with Lauren Casey, and using this as, as I said, as background information for meeting our measures. So we'll be actually using these documents, even though they won't go into effect until January, we'll be using these as the basis for our measures.
Right, and then, you know, as we do this, because this is happening countywide in all cities and in the county itself, this is a great opportunity to actually weigh in with the Regional Climate Protection Authority, because it's something that every city will be doing. So it's one of those great opportunities to be able to share that information rather than a one-by-one city basis going forward. So with that, any other questions? All right, let's open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Please step forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for action, discussion.
If there's no further discussion or any questions, I'd like to move to approve the ordinance. Jeff, do I read the whole thing, or do I go back to the, what would you like me to do?
You can just read the title of the ordinance itself.
An Ordinance of the City of Sonoma Repealing Chapter 14.10 of the Sonoma Municipal Code in Its Entirety and Reenacting a New Chapter 14.10, Adopting New Administrative Provisions and Adopting. Do you want me to continue, or just that's it?
I'd prefer you continue. Sorry about that.
And adopting by reference parts two, 2.5, three, four, five, six, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve of the 2016 California Building Standards Code and amendments thereto.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a second on that?
A second.
All right, and that was certainly easier than the motion itself. So at this point, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, let's call for the vote.
Councilmember Cook.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Aggermonte.
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Henley.
Aye.
Mayor Gallion.
Aye. So with that, we have passed for action this second reading and public hearing to adopt the ordinance repealing Chapter 14.10 of the Sonoma Municipal Code. All right, we're moving at galactic speed on to item 6C. Discussion, consideration, and possible adoption of an interim urgency ordinance imposing a moratorium on the outdoor cultivation of non-medical marijuana and making findings that said adoption is exempt under SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guideline Section 15061, among other provisions. Discussion, consideration, and possible adoption of an interim urgency ordinance imposing a moratorium on the indoor cultivation of non-medical marijuana, except under certain circumstances, and making findings that said adoption is exempt under SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guideline Section 15061, among other provisions. And this is for our city attorney, Jeff Walters, to now take over.
Thank you, mayor. As you know, on the ballot tomorrow is Proposition 64, which if approved by 50 percent plus one of the voters in California will become law the following day. And it provides that a dual licensing system for commercial non-medical marijuana enterprises will be established, and it would require that before any local business conducting one of the various components of medical, non-medical marijuana cultivation, production, packaging, distribution, and selling occurs, that that particular operation must obtain both a city license, if the city decides to regulate those activities, as well as a state license. The state, if this proposition is adopted, the state will begin forming regulations and license forms, et cetera, in hopes to have that process completed by January of 2018. Most commentators believe that's very ambitious and not likely to happen, but I think we need to think about that as sort of a target date, because until those regulations are in place and the state starts issuing licenses, the city does not have to adopt its own regulatory system. It has the power, however, to outright ban all non-medical marijuana commercial activities. Has the power to do that under Proposition 64, aside from the two urgency ordinances that are before you tonight. The council has that power. If you decide- And this is for our city attorney, Jeff Walters, to now take over.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, on the ballot tomorrow is Proposition 64, which if approved by 50% plus one of the voters in California will become law the following day. And it provides that a dual licensing system for commercial non-medical marijuana enterprises will be established, and it would require that before any local business conducting one of the various components of medical, non-medical marijuana cultivation, production, packaging, distribution, and selling occurs, that that particular operation must obtain both a city license, if the city decides to regulate those activities, as well as a state license. The state, if this proposition is adopted, the state will begin forming, forming regulations and license forms, et cetera, in hopes to have that process completed by January of 2018. Most commentators believe that's very ambitious and not likely to happen, but I think we need to think about that as sort of a target date. Because until those regulations are in place and the state starts issuing licenses, the city does not have to adopt its own regulatory system. It has the power, however, to outright ban all non-medical marijuana commercial activities. Has the power to do that under Proposition 64. Aside from the two urgency ordinances that are before you tonight, the council has that power. If you decide not to ban one or all of those types of activities, then you have the power to create reasonable regulations that must be complied with, in addition to obtaining a state license before an individual can operate some kind of non-medical marijuana commercial enterprise. On the personal side, Proposition 64 authorizes any person to cultivate up to six plants per residence on their property, either indoors or outdoors or a combination, but you cannot have in total more than six plants per residence. So, you could cultivate, if you have a single-family home on a standard city lot, under Proposition 64, a person could cultivate six plants, six plants indoors, or six plants outdoors or a combination, two indoors and four outdoors, whatever you'd like. However, Proposition 64 does allow cities to ban, outright ban, the outdoor cultivation of non-medical marijuana, but grants the right to individuals to cultivate indoors, a right that cannot be prohibited by a local ordinance. Cities, however, are given the power to regulate the indoor cultivation of up to six plants of non-medical marijuana. So, if Proposition 64 passes, it's likely that most, if not all, cities and counties will engage in some discussion about what kind of regulations should be imposed. For sure, there are issues of safety, intensity of grow lights, ventilation, mold, you name it, there can be a host of issues that the indoor cultivation of non-medical marijuana will implicate, that should probably be addressed by most municipalities in the state of California. The, the proposition is complicated. I think my copy is 50 or 60, maybe more pages, single-spaced, and it allows local agencies to impose taxes, which are subject to Proposition 218, which means they must be approved by the voters. In addition, the proposition imposes, I think it's a 15% tax statewide on certain, the commercial enterprises that might crop up as a result of this particular proposition. It needs to be studied, and the city's own development of policy needs to be worked out, and it will take some time. And the two measures before you tonight are simply to buy time. One, bans outdoor cultivation altogether. This is consistent with the council's resolution in December last year, where you construed your own existing development code to prohibit medical marijuana activities in the, in the city. It, the second ordinance bans indoor cultivation, except as permitted in the ordinance, and it does permit indoor cultivation of up to six plants, either in a, indoors in a residence or in a self-contained secure structure. And the self-contained secure structure is defined in the ordinance. This is also consistent with Proposition 64. We borrowed some of the language in Proposition 64 to create this interim ordinance that would permit, but regulate, the indoor cultivation of medic, of non-medical marijuana. Its primary goal is to impose some minimal safety and health requirements, as well as to put a cap on the number of plants that can be indoor, cultivated indoors. It will last only 45 days. It needs four of the five council members to vote in support of each of them. At the end of 45 days, or before 45 days is up, the council will be again asked whether it wishes to extend the moratorium, and you have the power to do that for up to 10 months and 15 days. And even that extended ordinance can be extended another 12 months. So, the total time that this particular, this ordinance is going to be in effect is two years. I do not think they will be in effect for two years. If, in fact, Proposition 64 passes and the council is interested in regulating more than the indoor cultivation of, of non-medical marijuana for personal use, we have this January 2018 deadline by which the, the state is telling us it's likely to have regulations in place and is hoping to issue licenses for commercial activities. So, the city would need to have its act in, in order at that time, have its set of regulations in place by that time in order to make sure that folks who are getting the state licenses are complying with the city's own regulations. That's a bit ways down the road. That's why those issues are not being addressed, and these two urgency ordinances, the issue of commercial activities, is not being addressed because you don't have to. And I attached a copy of the League of California Cities Analysis dated September 26th, I believe, to the staff report that talks about these things, and what needs to be done or should be done at a local level at this time. The, these two ordinances, these urgency ordinances, will not become effective until and unless Proposition 64 is passed. So, if it's not passed, then these ordinances will not take, take effect. If it does pass, then they will take effect. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them if I can.
Okay. Who wishes to start? Councilmember Hunley?
All right. I have a few questions. The first is, in the memo that you gave us at the end, it says, "Locals will retain the ability to regulate personal cultivation and to enact related ordinances at any time after the election." So, what is your thought behind the need to do this preemptively rather than doing this after the election?
The main reason, the main reason is to assure the council that if, in fact, it wants to regulate, and it takes several months to do so if you don't do it by an urgency ordinance. The normal process is, these are considered land use regulations. The council would have to amend its development code. Such an amendment, first of all, the council would give direction that it wants staff to process an amendment to the development code. If so, then it would, it may want to have a study session on what exactly should the regulations be for indoor or outdoor cultivation. And after that study session, the staff would develop something consistent with what the council thought was appropriate. It would first need to go to the planning commission, and the planning commission would make a recommendation to the council. There would then need to be two readings, and the whole process could take four to six months potentially. And during that time, people then are beginning to cultivate, outdoor and/or indoor, without the, the safety measures in place, and they may develop what are considered vested rights or grandfathered rights to continue that cultivation immune from later enacted regulations by the council. So, it's primarily to put a, push the pause button, give the council time to go through that process in a deliberate and informed and not a rushed way, and it hopefully will nip in the bud some of these initial cultivation activities that we may not be able to control if we don't have something in place when they begin.
Are there, so in Proposition 64, I know that the limit is six plants at home. Are there any other restrictions about the plants?
To my knowledge, there are no restrictions about the plants. There are other restrictions in Proposition 64 regarding how much you can possess and how much you can give to somebody else as a, for non-commercial reasons, but I do not know of any regulations in Prop 64 that pertains to the plants themselves.
Any other questions? Okay. Councilmember Cook?
Talking about different jurisdictions around the area that have, have accepted this, is unincorporated area, did they do one of these?
I don't believe so. The county, no.
And you know any other cities?
I do know that Martinez did one, and there was a, an article that I sent to both Carol and, and the chief, and a newspaper in Contra Costa, listing the various cities that have gone forward and preemptively adopted measures in anticipation of Proposition 64. And it appears there's, at least from this article, it sounded like, there are a number of them in Los Angeles. I wish I'd brought the article with me, I could read you the names. It indicated, named about half dozen to a dozen cities.
Yeah, I was just curious, within Sonoma County?
I don't, I'm not aware of any in Sonoma County.
Thank you.
Okay. Any, any further questions? If not, I'll open it up to the public for comment. So, this is the public hearing, so I'm opening it.
My name is Antoinette Curry. I live at 484 East Napa Street, Sonoma. I am here to support the moratorium on the outdoor and indoor cultivation of marijuana in Sonoma. The delicate brains and emotional stabilities of all of our children are at risk from Proposition 64 on the state ballot and from any local cultivation of marijuana. As Diane Davis pointed out in the Close to Home column in the Sunday, November 6th edition of the Press Democrat, "Regular Marijuana Use Has Been Linked to the Following: Damage to the Area of the Brain Associated with Learning and Memory, Reduced IQ Scores, Poorer School Performance, and Higher Dropout Rates; Depression, Anxiety, and a Loss of Motivation; and Paranoia, Psychosis, and Schizophrenia Beginning in Adolescence." If that weren't enough, as Ms. Davis points out, marijuana users present clear dangers on the roads, with increase in fatalities linked to legalization of marijuana. Traffic fatalities more than doubled in Washington in 2014, and in Colorado, marijuana is now involved in more than one out of five deaths on the road. Both of these states have legalized marijuana. My own daughter was in a treatments facility for two and a half years for use of drugs and other problems. This was a tremendous trauma on, for our family. I would never wish this on anyone else's family. This is not a farming issue, this is not a business issue, this is an issue about the safety of our children. Whatever great sums that the governmental entities may obtain from the legalization of marijuana will may, never make up for the harm that will be done to our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on this issue?
Jack Wagner, 270 West Napa Street. Yeah, I do want to speak on this a little bit. Did some homework on Prop 64. I think one of, one of the questions is, is there are other, I believe there's the other regulation that you can't have the plants within public view, so the outdoor growing is minorly regulated by the prop. So, I'm, I'm not in favor of the moratorium on the outdoor growing. I encourage you to pass the regulations on indoor, definitely, because that, I've met plenty of property owners that have had issues regarding fires and just inappropriate use of that. The first, you know, 45 days is winter, so I don't know how many outdoor growing operations the police departments had to deal with during winter. Maybe we could get information on that, and it's a, the small thing. You know, I guess I always respond to the kids, you know, I just went through the high school almost 20 years ago, and alcohol was a huge issue, and this is something that we continue to thrive on in this, you know, district, in the city. I know we have a grapes manager on the city council, involved in agriculture. You know, do we limit the amount of vines that people can grow for their home wine-making operations? You know, it's, I, I've said before, and, and I think hypocrisy is really one of the worst things to send to kids. I definitely feel for the traffic issues, and Prop 64 actually does divert most of that tax revenue towards law enforcement, to have field sobriety tests and to, to deal with that issue. So, we are addressing that issue. And I didn't write the bill, you know, a lot of people are complaining about this, this measure. But since February, it's been up in the polls. It hasn't been a single poll that shows that this was going to fail, so this isn't like coming out of nowhere. This is something that's been approaching us for a long time, and so I don't really know what we need to be catching up on. You know, I was looking into Moore County in Kentucky, so that's where the Jack Daniels Distillery is. It happens to be a dry county. You can't drink in that county. So, I mean, we don't have to, you know, what, throw the baby out with the bathwater. That distillery is the third, it accounts for a third of that tax base. It's half of the tourism, much like our wine industry is for us. And when I'm getting lectured about not being responsible with our tax revenues for not letting hotels go in on every open lot, and then here we are going to take a regressive stance against an emerging market, and this isn't just going to be California, this is what, 13 states that are likely to pass or have passed, so this is a large market, and we're going to be surrounded by this, and, you know, the idea that we're playing catch-up at the last minute, the night before the election, and I know my time's up, I appreciate that. But yeah, I definitely sympathize with the concerns, but I think we can be responsible about this.
Thank you very much, Jack. Anyone else wishing to speak on this issue? Bring it back to council. All right. Further discussion or actions? Mayor Pro-Tim?
Thank you. Well, you know, it's interesting, I have a million things to say about this, but we're only here for a couple of things, indoor or outdoor, and so I don't want to, you know, I don't want to expand on, on this issue. The only, the only thing I know is that, what is it, the governor of Colorado, John Hickenlooper, basically said it's, he wished that California would have waited so they could have come out with more results of the effects of legalization of marijuana. And I'll just leave it at that. You know, I'm sure that we're all adults and people are well-versed in this issue, and I'm just, you know, I just wish that we would have waited in this state, but money, of course, is something that's really important to everybody, and, I mean, that's my comment. I, unless there's questions.
Before you?
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Edwards?
So, so the way I look at, at the, the issues, the outdoor cultivation is already creating problems in Sonoma, and where the aroma of the cannabis is distinctive. Anywhere you walk, that there happens to be some, something growing at the right time of year. And it, I don't think it's fair to neighbors to have to put up with that. I, I look at potential problems down the road of disclosures with homes and all sorts of things. That could be real issues, especially with, when it comes to property values and people exchanging homes, et cetera. I think it could create some, some major problems. I don't really care what people do when they're inside their house on their own, own time, et cetera. I'm gonna, I'm gonna support the limitation, but I also want to comment that this is already, to quote Mike, I think it's, Mike McGuire came up with, it's about a $43 billion industry, which will probably become about a $20 billion industry, because people are going to grow commercially, it's just gonna, it'll, it'll drop the value, just like in the dairy industry that I'm in. People overproduce, the prices go down. So, and all this, this cash flow that we're pretending we're going to get is, I, I, I don't, I don't think it'll actually come. And, so, you know, I'm not, I'm not, actually, I already voted, and, you know, my family's not in support of Prop 64. Like I say, I don't have any issues with what people do in their private time, et cetera, but I, I just think for our community, I have young children, it's going to be around when they're old, older. It's not like it's going to go away, and alcohol will be around as well. It's just something that I feel pretty strongly about. I also look at our climate action issues on the other side, where if people are going to be growing indoors, I've read many reports around the state of people destroying homes, rental properties, et cetera, not just with marijuana, but with other chemical-oriented drugs, et cetera. But the amount of power that's used, if you go up into Humboldt County and Mendocino County, the amount of water that's been diverted for a lot of the operations, et cetera. You know, I think there has to be some, some type of regulation, I'm sure, I'm not sure, it's, it's probably going to pass, but I think we need to adopt these two measures just so we have firm ground to walk on as we move forward with this, and I think we'll end up doing the right thing with this issue. Thank you.
Other councilmembers? Councilmember Cook?
Yeah. I will also be supporting both of the interim urgency ordinances, just mostly based on local control. I would like to have this jurisdiction be able to, to have control over that, and I liked what our attorney said, just hitting the pause button, this is no way- This in no way reflects any way that I would feel about the cultivation of marijuana, but at this point, I think it's something that we need to look and have definitely regulated. And one fear would be the grandfathering in and enforcement. If we don't pass this, what happens if in two or three months, or even in 2018, something comes through? We don't have any way to know who was doing it and who wasn't. So mostly as an enforcement, I will be supporting both of these.
Councilmember Hundley.
I have to say that the timing of this all bothers me on the literal eve of the election. And as Jack said earlier, we'd known this was coming for a long time, and even this particular proposition was, I think, qualified back at the end of June. So I think that at the last minute to be suddenly making, taking an action like this, a lot of people have already voted thinking something's going to happen. Tomorrow, people are going to vote thinking something's going to happen, but little do they know, tonight, we're going to make this vote that's going to kick the can down the road, and I have no hope that anything would resolve in forty-five days, so this thing could drag on for a very long time, and I think it's conversations that we should have already had. So the indoor, I understand the need to regulate it. The one provision that I don't agree with is where people have to get written permission of their property owners, because I don't think that that was an intention of the proposition, and I don't see the need to interfere with something that should be controlled by private contracts. So I would support the indoor without that provision, but otherwise, I will not be voting for these tonight.
I'd just like to put out a few points of my own. I have heard stories of landlords who have not known that there has been growing happening on their properties, and immense damage, even to the point of their insurance not even reimbursing them for the damage and replacement that had to happen as a result of the growing on a property. I know that this is recreational, you know, that is basically happening with this proposition. I feel that somehow having three or four comments here in this chamber is not enough for me to have a transparent action of input in order to say yes or no about, you know, do I want the state to step in, or do I want to be doing local control on this particular issue? I would like to see it more in a public process, where we would be going through with the measures or the increments of what we need to define under our control. Sonoma has, you know, our character, our city character, and frankly, this is not a subject that's really been entertained by, other than a few articles that have gone on in our newspapers for this. Again, I, you know, it's like deja vu back here to redevelopment. It's like the state is coming in, they're doing something. You need to be performing your particular action, not knowing what's going to be safeguarded for the future. And caution, I think, is very important at this point, that you just not enter into it or say, this is so on indoor, or this is not so on outdoor. To me, I would like to hear the public actually be talking and giving me that feedback on this issue. I've had mayor's hours for months now, this, even though the proposition has been qualified. I have not had people coming to me and asking me that question. I get more inquiries from the press than I do from people here in this community. Now, I think there may be a misconception about the fact that this is voted in, and yes, it happens. It's not very clear about the next steps after the vote, is that it happens within the state of California. I have relatives in Oregon, I have friends in Colorado that I have talked to. There's been a huge impact upon the youth on recreational marijuana. Underage youth are still having access to this. They're having access because they're going into properties and they're just taking, you know, the plants themselves. So I don't know how the insurance companies relate on this, you know, what's covered for indoor damage. You know, we have nothing here that actually gives us a lot of information on the ground. I do know that the emergency rooms have been treating an incredible amount of individuals that have been traced back to the use of recreational marijuana. I see no quality control going on with the marijuana itself. These are all things that I want to be finding out, you know, for me, if it's being sold or, you know, you're using it, who's doing it? I think natural resources is another area in which I think we need to look very cautiously. We talked about drought resilience. This is an incredible, you know, water product as well. It's also chemical-based. We're responsible for water quality. We're going to be responsible for water underground, above ground. This needs to be vetted in so many different capacities for what's idyllic for Sonoma, the city of Sonoma. And to me, to take time to analyze what some of these questions and answers will be, I think is appropriate. So I will be supporting this particular action tonight. And with that, if there is any further discussion, I would be entertaining an action.
I'd like to make a motion if there are no other questions or comments. And may I ask again our city attorney? I'm on outdoor cultivation, and that would be one at a time?
Yes, please, one at a time, and just to make a motion to adopt the ordinance and then read the title.
All right, thank you. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance, an urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Sonoma, establishing a temporary moratorium on the outdoor cultivation of non-medical marijuana to become effective upon the passage of Proposition 64.
And we need a second?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have further discussion?
Well, I think I'd like to give Councilmember Hundley, I think you've said that you are not in support of one part of, was that the outdoor or the indoor?
That was for indoor.
Okay.
Yeah, I generally like everything on there except, let's see, it's C-13, it's on page 170 in our packet, written consent of the property owner to cultivate non-medical marijuana within the residence.
Indoor, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is for indoor.
But you're okay? I'm sorry, I don't want to assume and make you say something, but you're saying outdoor is okay? Is that what you're saying on this?
Uh, yes, I'm voting no for outdoor.
All right. I just wanted to make sure you were heard.
Yes, for indoor, if it didn't have that provision.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you were heard, I'm sorry.
Okay, so any further discussion? Then we would call for the vote.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Edgromonti?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hundley?
No.
Mayor Gallion?
Aye, so that does pass on a four-one vote for restricting outdoor on a temporary moratorium on the outdoor cultivation of non-medical marijuana.
So if there are no other questions or comments, I would also like to make a motion for an urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Sonoma, establishing a temporary moratorium, except under certain circumstances, on the indoor cultivation of non-medical marijuana, to become effective upon the passage of Proposition 64.
And we will need a second on that?
Second.
Okay, further discussion? Is there an amendment that you wanted to make on this?
I mean, if there's interest of other people of dropping that provision, that'd be nice to talk about it, but I don't know if that has the support.
Well, could I just, could I just have a, what doesn't make sense?
If I could ask the attorney, what we're doing is we're doing intern ordinance. We really can't be picking and choosing at this time.
No, you can. You can modify the language in the ordinances before you.
Meaning that if...
If you don't think it's appropriate that the landlord in a rental situation gives permission to cultivate indoors in a landlord's property, then you would agree with Councilmember Hundley to strike that section, which is number...
Thirteen.
Thirteen, thirteen on page 170 of the agenda packet. These are the conditions under which indoor cultivation is permitted, and thirteen says the written permission of the property owner is required. She does not support that particular condition.
Well, if we're imposing a moratorium on the indoor cultivation of non-marijuana, non-medical marijuana, and if we add her provision in, then we're saying that it's okay.
We are, this allows indoor cultivation. It's structured to say it's a moratorium, except, and the exceptions allow cultivation up to six plants, which is consistent with Proposition 64. 64 says, if it gets passed tomorrow, it doesn't really matter what this council does in terms of allowing six. You get to cultivate indoors six, but the Proposition 64 has no regulations concerning that, except one, I think you cannot see the cultivation occurring from a public place if it's indoors. So this listing of conditions is borrowed and modified, borrowed from other cities. Pittsburgh, for example, Healdsburg, for example, have indoor cultivation ordinances, and we've taken some of those and grafted them into this particular ordinance. So it will allow cultivation up to six plants indoors. But one of the conditions we're proposing is that the landlord approve of that.
So my intent of asking, Councilmember Hundley, this is out of respect for her and her position, but I don't support that, sorry. So my original amendment is...
Well, there would be no amendment.
Yeah, okay. No, sorry. My original intro, motion is...
All right, so we stand with the original motion and the second with no amendment. All right, is there any further discussion on this particular item? All right, seeing none, let's go for the roll call vote.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Agamonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hundley?
Nope.
Mayor Gallion?
Aye. So that passes again for the moratorium on the indoor use, and it's a vote of four-one. So with that, we will move on to our next agenda item, and the item is item 7A. All right, this is the adoption of a resolution approving an application by Destination Races for Temporary Use of the City Streets for the Napa to Sonoma Wine Country Half Marathon on Sunday, July 16, 2017. And I believe this is Lisa Jansen, our special events manager, who will be taking over this item.
Good evening. So the agenda item tonight is the approval. Destination Races has requested temporary use of city streets for the Napa to Sonoma Wine Country Marathon as follows. The closure of East Napa between Broadway and First Street between 6:30 and 11:00 a.m. on Sunday, July the 16th of 2017. Closure of the northbound far-right lane of Broadway between East MacArthur and the Plaza, including road closure signs at Chase, France, and Patton Streets between 7:15 and 11:00 a.m. on Sunday, July the 16th, 2017. Closures of East MacArthur Street between Second Street East and Broadway, 7:50 a.m. until 11:00 a.m. on Sunday, July the 16th, 2017. Closures of Denmark Street between High School and the Napa Road between 7:15 a.m. until 10:45 a.m. on Sunday, July the 16th, 2017. The applicant will be responsible for providing notice to all residents and businesses affected by the street closures in the affected area. Denmark between, and it goes back through, and it lists those eight street closures. Would you like me to reread them again? Okay. So the applicant will be required this year to hire a professional traffic safety entity to assist with all the detours within the city limits and provide the notification, which is slightly different than what happened or transpired this past year. So the special events committee reviewed this proposal at the meeting on October 5th, at which time they identified recommended conditions of approval that have been incorporated into the attached resolution. The council action item is adopt the resolution approving this use of city streets, which includes the conditions recommended by the special events committee members, including police, fire, public works, and planning departments. Do you have any questions?
Okay, councilmembers, do you have questions? Okay, Councilmember Hundley?
So you might have said this, but is this the same path that they took last year, this past year?
It is the same path. The primary difference is, this last resolution talked about rolling closures, and really, there are street closures involved with the event for a limited period of time, and they do roll from the time that they start on Napa Street and enter into Sonoma Plaza.
And when the committee discussed it, did they talk about, did anyone mention the difficulty of getting across town, since a lot of our main thoroughfares are blocked off? Just wondering what the discussion was.
Yes, they did discuss that. It does put additional traffic on Spain Street, and that's probably where most of the rerouting will take place, is down along Spain Street. And our goal was try to get notification out in advance and try to get the detours moving in that direction prior to them hitting Second Street or First Street.
Councilmember Edwards?
So last year, I had quite a few complaints on the cross-traffic, as Councilmember Hundley stated, but I also noticed that when the magic hour of 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock, whenever the race was supposed to be over, there were still stragglers...
Yes.
...that were coming, and people took off their orange vests and just left them on the things and then walked away. And so I'm a little concerned with that, because then you had people moving barricades and driving through, and people still walking up the highway. So I'm a little concerned with...
I'd like to turn it over to Matt Docstetter, and he can kind of walk you through his sweep team and what their primary responsibilities are.
Thanks, Lisa. Yeah, council, I think that the variation from year to year, I mean, it's the same course. It's, a lot of times, it's how slow is the last walker in this case, because let's face it, they're walkers at that point, and how strict are we with, you know, our follow-up crew and CHP officer and SAG vehicle as to enforce, you know, how slow that runner or walker can be. So I think last year, a lot of the problem was a volunteer was staffed at that position at MacArthur and Second Street, and she was a pretty tough cookie, and stayed there until the very last walker came through and was not letting anybody go through. So, you know, we obviously weren't really aware of that until it was after the situation. You know, it was probably 11 o'clock or something after that. So, anyway, so the plan this year is, as Lisa said, is to hire flaggers and not a volunteer to be at those intersections, and also, a lot of times, what happens is people come down any one of the streets, Chase, France, or whatever, take a left on Austin and try and get through, and they can't. They can get through, actually, on Second, you can turn on MacArthur and head out that way and head down to Napa Road or come back around Spain Street. So there is access, but a lot of times, people aren't aware, and they get stuck. So we'll be putting up detour signs, and we'll have flaggers leading up to that point, so they'll be able to know before, so they'll be able to head up to Spain without having come down Austin. And we're going to have two radioed people on MacArthur talking to each other, so we actually won't have as much of an issue on MacArthur for people coming out of MacArthur Place or being confused about taking a left, coming down MacArthur off of Broadway. So, anyway, we have a number of things in place. We're going to work closer, more closely with Dean at Public Works on, you know, getting all of this signed and set up in advance. So it's really, hasn't been a huge problem in the past, but last year it was exasperated because we had a pretty tough volunteer that didn't understand. They needed to open that up at 10:30, and they didn't, so.
Anyone else have questions? Sure.
So, actually, I guess the place that I was speaking about was further up on, I mean, literally on every street, I mean, there were people, I don't even know what time it was when they were...
Yeah, you're talking about, you know, Chase, France, all the way up at the intersection of Broadway. Right, right. So we'll have flaggers or native sons at all those spots, and they know that at a certain time when we come through, in fact, you know, I would take it, Kevin Poole, who's our director of operations, will take it upon himself to actually be the one that goes down and lets everybody know that it's time to open those, you know, the road up or not. We just have to be careful to... We just have to be careful to make sure that there isn't still a, you know, large groups of people coming in. But we're in contact with, with police and CHP to know, you know, what the situation is out there. But there, we have a three and a half hour time limit on the course. So people know they're supposed to be in by that time.
And then my last question, has this been reviewed by CSCC yet? Has, have they been through that review process and?
No, it has not. It's pending this resolution, but we are, it is on the schedule for this Wednesday evening.
Okay, because it, for, to me, it's, I, I have a tough time just saying, okay, yeah, let's just close the roads without actually getting the review and seeing what the issues were last time, because I'm sure there, there's probably other things if the CSCC's.
Are you referring to the post-event review? Because we have done the post-event review. That was, was that October, September? September, we did the post-event review. And really, the main issues were the road closures and then some observance of tents being staged early in the day on Saturday and sitting at a kind of upright position, but blocking parkgoers' ability to enjoy the park. I mean, it was kind of.
Yeah, I don't think that's, that's for us to talk about tonight. That's why I think that it's something that I think we should have that.
You want that report?
Yeah. I would like to have it, because I, it's, you know, and I don't want to go into it now, because we're not supposed to go into it now, but it's, you know, I'd, I'd like to see that.
Okay.
And see what we're going to be dealing with.
Okay.
Before we approve road closures. I mean, but it's up to the council to, I'd just assume, you know, table this item till after we've had that.
I see your, your point, because only in, you know, I'm happy to close the streets when it's, you know, for a really great reason. And so you have to sort of balance the reason you're shutting down the streets with the roads that you're closing. But I could go both ways on that one.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you.
If we're just asking questions or?
Yeah, so I welcome our brethren from Napa. I think it's a wonderful event. The only thing which is, seems to be my constant question, and it has nothing to do with you, is, so what does this do for the Plaza? Do people eat in the restaurants? Do people, or is served for, food served, liquor, all of, whatever, wine on the Plaza? And the benefit doesn't really go to our people on the Plaza?
I'm so glad you asked that question. Yeah, I mean, we've done an economic impact study, and I can give you numbers on that, but, which it's in the millions of dollars. And I'm not talking about just Sonoma, I mean, we're talking about the region. We bring in, you can't get a hotel room that, that weekend. I mean, we bring in a tremendous amount of business. We've, we've looked at it, we've talked to merchants, I mean, we've talked to, I know a lot of restaurant owners, I know the hotel owners. We bring as much business as any event does in this town, probably more so, because people are here for longer stay, a lot of people are here for the week, if not the long weekend. So in terms of the, what we do for the businesses, yes. I mean, it's a tremendous amount of, and I will be happy to share the economic impact report. So that really, you know, to me, shouldn't be a concern. This is one of the most popular half marathons in the world. It, it sells out immediately and it brings people to town. There's just no question about that. And we don't, we're not selling wine on the Plaza, we're not selling food on the Plaza other than maybe one food booth, because we have to have something on the Plaza for people that are sticking around. But basically, people fill up the restaurants. I know, I have tons of friends and family that come, and, I mean, I talk to merchants. I go out myself, so if you want to survey the restaurants, you know, I'd welcome you to do that. I think people that have been around this town a long time know that, you know. So anyway, so that's what it does. It raises a lot of money for charity. This event raises three, over three million dollars through fundraising efforts, through charity partners, Crohn's and Colitis being the largest one. We, we, we benefit about, I think it's about five local nonprofits as well, to the tune of thirty thousand plus, so. It changes people's lives, it's, it's a very uplifting event. I mean, this is a very, very positive event. The only downside is that for one Sunday morning, between eight AM and ten thirty AM, people have to go four blocks out of their way if they want to cross Broadway, and they live right there on one of those streets. That's really about it.
Well, I remember that you were very convincing. If I had a company who I wanted represented by someone, it would be you. And I appreciate, you know, your information, but it's kind of rosy. I think that there were some issues, just that we've mentioned here. And, and I'm glad that you support nonprofits, I think that's wonderful. But I'm going to rely on our, our event coordinator, because I was, I'm leaning to not support this, but I appreciate Councilmember Edwards asking if we can have that report from CSCC and, and take a look at, is that, to take a look at that information. And I think your role is going to be very important in this respect. Thank you.
I'm, I just have a question also. All right, last year, having been a victim of, of the Spain Street issue, going from one side of the Plaza to the other, going into the parking lot, not having any spaces to park in the parking lot. I, I just, the bus that was on the, that was on Spain Street was just a real issue for a lot of parking on the, on the Plaza. And it did not leave at eleven o'clock.
Yeah, well, the buses don't leave till twelve, but I think we addressed that, didn't we, Lisa? Aren't we going to move the spot where those particular buses that you're referring to?
Yes, we, we've asked that they be staged outside of the Plaza. I believe those are the equipment buses? Are those the ones that take the?
Yeah, you're talking about the, the bag chuck buses.
Right, because it just seemed the corner that was the east side and the east on Napa, I mean, not at Napa, First Street, First Street East, the little top corner, and then going across, was occupied by the buses there. And then there was another media truck or some other rental truck that was also in the drop-off zone, you know, one of the spaces there. Visibility was absolutely nil. And so you have people that were trying to cross and, and they couldn't get the cars across. And I was driving through that. So I came in about nine thirty, ten o'clock, and there was absolutely no parking at all based on that issue. Now, not that I was looking to park, but I was actually, you know, trying to represent the mayor being there at that event. And it was difficult for me. I just wanted to say that if, if this does not work out your parking plan for this year, I would really strongly recommend that you be doing a relocation up near the Vets Building and keep it out of the Plaza, so to, so to speak, or, you know, go down to the school district in their parking lot, one or the other, to just facilitate a better transportation model there.
Yeah, we do use the Vets Parking Building, and we put, the buses do that, you know, take people out to Kuvasan in Napa, they do leave from there. So we do try and fill that up. Naturally, when people come in the morning, their first instinct is to want to park on the Plaza, so.
Right. Well, we, we have that, and, and, but I think there was a lot of vendors, there were other participants, friends, you know, it was, it was really like lockdown, which only creates that frustrated person that's trying to go to church or something other with that one little, you know, view shed there. And I just want to say that was very difficult to, to transcend.
The application says thirty-five hundred runners and eight thousand people on the Plaza. That's almost as many people that live in town, so I can.
Right.
Carol, maybe you can answer this. How many other events do we have in town that are, have eight thousand people?
Probably just the Fourth of July is, and that's about five, so.
Well, these are numbers that Brett came up, I mean, Brett actually came up with that number, so it's an estimate from the police department. So I don't, I don't know if it's eight thousand. If it is, it's over the course of, you know, the, the whole.
I mean, and, you know, it's basically, it's not, you know, not, we're not talking about it having the race or not, it's about, you know, the road closures. I, I'd like to push, you know, I'd just like to table it till the next meeting to.
Well, this is, but this is actually, you know, processing the streets themselves. So if an issue has been corrected, you know, that's identified in a plan based on a report that was already produced as a post-event report, I think our, our special events coordinator is actually our spokesperson on that right there. I'm, I know there's timing with this issue. I know that there's advertising, there's all sorts of other things. Matt, do you have two weeks in which to be able to suspend this for approval?
Not really. I mean, if we do, it's a problem for us, it's a big problem. People plan their, you know, their year, this is their one big event, they travel from all over, you know, to this thing. And it's just, yeah, I mean, we, we moved it back already once to accommodate, you know, the schedule, and you're asking us to do it again, it's just.
Well, I'm just asking you the question.
Yeah, yeah, right. I mean, if we're asked to do that again. I, I felt like, you know, when we had the review, we talked about, you know, the traffic issues and the situation, you know, and we came up with a solid plan to resolve it. So I, I don't, I mean, isn't, wasn't that the whole point of the, the meeting?
That was the main point of the SEC meeting. There was a lot of time spent on discussing the road closures and how we can handle them better and just mitigate some of the, the issues in and around the Plaza. One of the discussions was the buses. And we don't have a bus plan in place today, but it's, it is noted that there will be discussion with our street supervisor. I think it's thirty days in advance that we will discuss parking and routing of buses.
Well, I, I think that's why the purpose of this meeting is to advise you of some of the issues and the feedback that we received in council chambers. So tonight, you know, what's really before us, and I think our city attorney would concur, this is really about our traffic plan and, and the closure of our streets. So to me, that's, you know, I'm not speaking for any other council member up here, but that's the issue that I'm looking to address. And as long as you're aware of that issue, you had brought it up, and it will be part of the consideration that there will be a very clear path that will allow our residents to come up through Spain and back again, that will not make that the congestion highway, because it was unsafe. And had any child decided to be around or bicycling, there was no visibility in that particular area. And that's what I'm concerned about.
It's noted.
Thank you.
What are we saying?
Well, at this, at this point, it's just, we're, for discussion, we still have to go out to public comment, all right? I think we've answered some of our questions. We have, yes, we can do one more?
So I have one more question. So in your discussions, so Fifth Street West going south across where the runners are, is that intersection, is it closed going through there? Or are cars still allowed to go south on Fifth Street West?
They can go south on Fifth Street West.
So in all, in your discussions about funneling people, because some people are just trying to get across town, and Spain is so squeezed, have you talked about pushing people down to Napa Road and just getting them away from the downtown center?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's an option too. It just depends on how we want to, you know, point the detour signs and, and give, give information out when we do the public notices. And we, we should put something in the paper, you know, the week of as well. But to me, it would be the choice of the resident if they wanted to go down to Napa Road or if they wanted to go up to Spain.
Well, except when they go up to Spain, they won't realize that they're like driving into.
Well, it's more crowded in Spain, yeah. So Napa Road would be an easier way across, for sure.
And, and I would make the recommendation, especially in the church crowd, that this is what generated the action, that that church be advised and notify the parishioners as well.
Or which church was that?
The one that is on Francis. No, it's the other side. On the east side.
Okay.
On the east side, the church on, off of Spain, so, and Napa. That's where they, we're having the most congestion.
Is that the one behind the community center?
Yes, you're right. Okay, so, so that's the, the one area, at least that I got the feedback on. So we're still, any, no more further questions? We can go out to public and get comment and then bring it back to us to decide? All right? So let's open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue? All two of you? Okay. Come on back, and we're at council for discussion or further action.
Well, I, I would prefer, gosh, I've done events myself, huge ones, and I know you're, you're up against printers and all that stuff, reservations and all of those things. But I yield to Councilmember Edwards, I know that you said about tabling possibly until the next meeting.
Well, like I said before, I'd like to just see what, where the CSCC comes back. I mean, we're, you know, we're talking about, you know, this is the first time I've, you know, when we got the packet on Thursday, eight thousand people is a lot of people. And, you know, if we want to get into, you know, what the setup was and so on, I mean, there were pallet fences and all kinds of other interesting things on the Plaza. And our, our Plaza with, you know, twenty-six weeks of, of Tuesday parties has been pretty beaten down. And I'm, you know, one of my goals, one of our council goes, goals is to protect the Plaza. And, you know, it's something where, you know, I see that great big high school we have, which would be a great place to end this event with plenty of room for buses and parking and everything else. But I haven't, you know, I haven't seen the plan of what this event's going to look like this year. And, you know, I mean, I wasn't happy with it last year. I, I got loads of calls about, you know, why can't I get across town and so on? You know, even though it's the, you know, Mr. Docstetter says it's just one day a year, but it's not really one day a year. We have, there's a party going on every weekend in this town. And it's not just, you know, and that's, you know, July is right in our prime time. Our hotels are running at eighty percent occupancy. You know, I don't, you know, I don't know that that's, you know, going to make the hotels squirm, but I, I don't believe it will. But it's, it's something that I think we have to really look at the whole package. And I don't have the whole package in front of me, so I can't. I, I just soon look at it and, after we see it in a couple of weeks and see if there's some significant changes in, in the plan.
All right, do I have Councilmember Cook?
Yeah, I understand both sides of the issue on this one with timing. But, you know, I think we need to get our timing a little bit better. I do agree with Councilmember Edwards. We do need to have this go to the, to the committee and then come back, and then we can see the, the full story. And I'm sorry for timing, but I, I think I would like to see things adjusted, so we don't have to sit here and make a decision that I do not want to make tonight. So I'm going to make a motion that we table this to the next meeting, hopefully, because timing is, is of essence, and after the CSCC meeting.
I'll second that, but may I ask a question?
Sure.
I think the CSCC has already done their report, we just haven't seen it. Is that, it didn't get to us? Is that what I'm hearing? I can't remember.
It sounds like there's some confusion. Are you, because the post? It goes tomorrow, or Wednesday. And so from the historical perspective, it seems like the resolution, street resolution has always gone prior, which I always was kind of going, okay, that, that's fine. So I was following the protocol of the past. And it sounds like in some of these instances, you might want to go through the full CSCC review, get their approval, see what the conditions of the application are before you make the street resolution decision. Does that sound right?
Yes, it does, and that's what the motion states. And probably the biggest part of that is because we had so many complaints at, at the council chambers due to this event, that it's better to have it go the direction that, that I was just speaking of.
I apologize. I, I probably could have anticipated that a little bit better, so I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
So does that mean we'll be able to get that done before we meet in two weeks?
Yes, the CSCC meeting is this Wednesday.
Oh, okay.
Yes, six thirty.
So then I, I'd like to make a second, yeah, second.
All right, so we have a first, we have a second. Any further discussion? I'm glad we had discussion on this item. And I, I feel that it was great that we had Mr. Docstetter here to go ahead and voice some of the questions that we had on it. And in the future, you know, our process should be a little bit more streamlined on this. Do you anticipate that when we review our special events policy in the future, that we would be stating that this would be protocol for what we would be doing? City manager?
Yes, and, and if I could clarify, and it is something that, that you may want to look at when we review the special events policy. A few years ago, council chose to change the way it looked at street closure policy. Prior to that, street closure applications actually came to council after the CSCC approved the events. And a few years ago, council changed that policy and, and asked that the street closures come prior to CSCC looking at events. And, you know, through. And, you know, through your discussion tonight, it appears that you want to see how the events, you know, are going to happen and the impacts and potentially the changes that, and the discussions that CSCC has as how the events are going to take place before you make your decision as to street closures. So I think that that is an area of discussion that you'll want to have when you review your special events policy that will be coming up in the near future, because I, I think that you're wise to look at that, because events do change year to year and potentially are modified by how CSCC are looking, CSCC is looking at the various applications, and potentially events do grow, and that is good background for you to have when you are considering street application and street closures. So that is an area that, that you perhaps want to revisit, you know, for future applications.
Thank you. And, and I know that this has been beneficial in the, in the past to actually see those reports. It was a question that I had for the city manager, you know, today also in reviewing this process. So I, I think we'll go ahead and call for the vote on this unless there's further discussion.
I just have, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I have one thing. I know today, our city manager and I discussed the event at the high school, but there's no drinking on that campus, obviously, so that's out of the question. But I think you could, maybe parking might be beneficial, and with shuttles back and forth, I have no idea.
I'm just looking for less congestion on the, on the plaza itself and an already congested atmosphere.
We used to have parking at the high school, and we used to run buses from the high school, you might remember.
Yes.
So I don't see any problem with taking it back there. If, if the problem is the congestion on the north end of the plaza is what we're talking about, then that would, that would alleviate a lot of that. So I think that's a pretty easy solution right there.
Well, and, and in your discussions that may have yet to happen, all right, that might be considerations, you know, that you might bring up at your, at your meeting also on, at CSCC.
Okay, we will. Just from an event producer standpoint, I mean, we did, you know, as Carol mentioned, it was the other way, and Lisa also, so we've tried to go with the flow, ebb and flow of things over the years and, and stick with timelines and all that, and it's, 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 it's not the easiest thing to do as event producer, but we're doing our best, okay?
Well, you have a very wanting and deserving event. You have turnover. I know how people like to reserve this a year ahead, and it's very difficult to plan without having your pro forma in, in place. And I agree that if we can vet this particular issue, and this is a winning formula, then we are making a different plan, a more successful plan for your futures.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
So with this, with this particular issue, we need to do a vote on it before we call it the end, all right? So if Rebecca, you would entertain us one more time?
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Aggermonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunley?
Yes.
Mayor Gallion?
Yes, so with that, we will table this item until our next meeting, which we will have the report out from Community Services and Environment Commission. Thank you very much, Mr. Doc Stetter, all right? Regular calendar, city council is successor agency, there is no item here. Councilmember reports and comments?
Just have a couple of reports here, fun ones.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you. On the twenty-ninth, the Sonoma Valley Women's Club had a craft fair, and again, I held that important position of working the kitchen and selling hot dogs, so I was very proud of that. And it was, I had a great time, and they're doing a wonderful job. And actually, last Sunday, I, I went to, for the Firefighter Association, the Sonoma Brewing Company, there was a fundraiser for the Firefighter Association, they're trying to raise funds, and so I attended that. They had one wonderful bratwurst sandwiches and, or, sorry, yeah, hot dogs. And other than that, that's, you know, what I've done. I attended the North Bay Watershed Association, and they're doing some wonderful work. It's one of the most interesting committees I've ever served on, so I appreciate being, being on that committee. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Edwards?
I just want to report on the Sonoma Valley Rotary Club on Saturday morning did, put eight yards of sand in the volleyball court in Depot Park. We raked millions of leaves out there as well and cleaned up some of the, the brush, et cetera, hauled off a whole truckload of stuff. And we had, we provided the funds to Sonoma Overnight Shelter to, we let them employ three of their folks who came and worked very hard with us, and got the Rotarians to work with, with three of our homeless residents in, in Sonoma. And it was very nice to see all the people, and there happened to be another race there that day of, the two-hundred-mile race or whatever it was. So we had all the runners coming through Depot Park as well, but it was very nice. We also cleaned up around the Mason Avi, just, the, the city did a great job, there were the staff taking care of that, but we, we tried to clean up everything we could in the driveway of Mason Avi and just to, you know, just to be there, working with our folks, I think we spent about three hours and we had twenty-five people. So we got a lot done, and it was just a, a great feeling to have lots of residents coming up. And of course, I shouted out to them, "Vote yes on Measure U," every time they came by. But it was just, it was a great, great thing that my fellow Rotarians did, and along with the Overnight Shelter providing us some help.
That's great. Anyone else? Comments or reports? Well, I, I went through, you know, went to and through many different events over the last week. Friday was the Treasure Artist. I supported the Wine Country Marines at Jacuzzi on Saturday night. It was a wonderful and stellar performance, two-hundred-and-forty-one years of the Marine Corps in celebration of their birthday ball. An incredible speaker who is part of the Marine Reserve's commander, and talked about, which I had never really known, but talked about the part that Marine Corps Reserves actually played in all the different wars from World War I until, you know, current. And, you know, as the country has changed with its, you know, enlistment and volunteering, you know, properties, how valuable this is. But the message that the commander had out there, which I thought was really sentient to almost anyone, is the fact that is our technology current with the computer age and the digital age that we actually are in right now? And we've had definitely some issues with the Internet of Things, you know, going a little wild. So this is all things that, you know, as we prepare for in the future, that we need to be thinking about. And in, in that realm, I'll just switch to the fact that Veterans Day is returning here to Sonoma. So the Sonoma Veterans of Foreign Wars Post nineteen forty-three will be observing Veterans Day this year on Friday at eleven o'clock at the Veterans Memorial Building in Sonoma. There'll be a free breakfast to all veterans and their family and guests at nine thirty in the morning with a ceremony to follow. And they're honored this year to have a candidate for California Assembly Lieutenant Colonel, Colonel Charlie Shope as the guest of honor. He's a graduate of Chico State in Soil and Water Science with graduate work in hydrology and vinticulture. He's a Yolo County farmer since eighteen, his family has been in farming since eighteen eighty-two, has twenty-eight years of service in the United States Marine Corps. He was in the Battle of Fallujah and Desert Storm, and he's also served two terms, two terms as a School Board trustee and Community Service District Director. He's Alliance Club President, and they are just saying to the public, please come out and enjoy the morning with them. Today, I attended the Water Advisory Committee and Tech Advisory Committee. There were several acknowledgements. The Secretary Linda Hall, who has been for the past five years part of this board, is retiring. As a matter of fact, she flew back from Hawaii just to have her recognition at this particular meeting today, so it's a wonderful thing. Casey Rainey will be taking over her position. And then we have the acknowledgement of Efren Correo as, as his position on the board, because this will be his last meeting in that respect as he steps off the Board of Supervisors currently. We received a EPA Water Science Partner of the Year Award and an Excellence Award. There'll be a photo of these awards later. This is the Environmental Protection Agency. This is quite a recognition for a water agency to have. And just to let you know, in probably the most interesting subject at this point is the Fish Flow Projects. There is a, currently, and released an environmental impact report for the Fish Habitat Flows and Water Rights Project. So there are going to be two more workshops, because they have extended it, and this will be comment period for almost a hundred and eighty days. It's a very important project in our community. There'll be hearings in Cloverdale on November sixteen and Guernville November seventeen. They will start at six o'clock, and you can check the Sonoma County Water Agency site for them. Fish are very happy in the Russian River. We have, through October fifteenth, a hundred and seventy-five Chinook salmon have been detected in the Mirabelle Fish Ladder. Eighty-six Chinook were observed at Healdsburg, and forty salmon, unknown species, likely Chinook, were seen entering Dry Creek. This is a really incredible success story, and it was wonderful to see the ceremony of the fish passage opening last week. Many, many people attended, but the windows in which you can actually see the fish are, you know, probably about four or five across a corridor, and they're as tall as what you might see in an aquarium. And it's wonderful to see the fish. However, because of the rain, the flows were so fast that the fish were hiding, it was a little turbulent. We did see one eel, though, all right? So we were all looking for more, and unfortunately, earlier in that year, or earlier that week, more had been visible before the rains. So with that, I will go ahead and pass the mantle over to the city manager for her comments and announcements.
No, no, no announcements.
All right. Comments from the public? No, seeing no one, I'll close comments from the public. We will be adjourning this, this meeting in honor of Dick Cole, Dr. Rolf Alness, and Mike Brocco. And remember, everyone, this is the election eve. It's get out the vote, get to vote, and make sure you vote, because this is actually how you go ahead and change the future. So thank you, and have a wonderful evening.